Okay. All right. Ms. Peddaway, you ready? You good? Everyone good? You good? All right. I'll wait to Ms. Clemmons. Just tell her we're ready to start. I just didn't want her standing. Is that good? Good evening. I'd like to, I'd like to announce the establishment of a quorum and call the November 28th, 2023 work session business meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to call for an observation of a moment of silence. Thank you. Moving forward, we'll start with the board chair comments. And I'd like to take this opportunity to give a shout out, like I've done before, to Warren County Schools alumni and Warren County High School graduate Andrew Marlin. And some of you might know him. His father, Bob Marlin, was the social studies teacher at the high school for decades. Anyway, Andrew is a musician and he and he's been in a band for the last 15, 20 years. Watch House, formerly known as Mandolin Orange, and they've done exceptionally well internationally and nationally. And as a mandolin player, he wanted to play more bluegrass music, so he established a string band. And that string band's debut album was recently nominated for a Grammy Award. So congratulations to Andrew and his father. And I guess I say that because I'd like to challenge myself, my colleagues, the district to continue to support the arts, particularly at the high school level. I think academics is a, is an important pathway for students, but the arts is an honorable and viable pathway as well. And we need to give kids the opportunity to explore the arts as part of their school career. So again, thank you and congratulations to one of our own. Any other board members? If not, Mr. Sutton.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We hope you all had a happy Thanksgiving or however you chose to celebrate our fall break. We hope you had some time to rest, relax, fellowship with family and friends, and reflect on all the things that we have to be thankful for. We also want to thank our exceptional child nutrition staff for the Thanksgiving feast that they prepared for lunch the Thursday before Thanksgiving. We had turkey, gravy, dressings, greens, all of the, the dressings, and of course, a bit of cranberry sauce. And so again, thanks to our exceptional child nutrition staff for their, for their work. Also, before the fall break, we hosted our second annual Careers on Wheels Career Fair. This was for both Warren County Middle School and both of our high schools. It showcased careers that use mobile equipment as part of their daily operation. This year, we had vehicles and representatives from Halifax EMC. We sent a bucket truck and a lineman. East Point Mobile Crisis Management, the Warren County Sheriff's Office. The Forest Service of North Carolina bought three trucks and a forest fire bulldozer. Vance Grumford Community College had their truck driver training. We had our own Mrs. Cranston, who brought, sold Jamaican cuisine food truck and has some delicious wing samples for students. So a botchy food truck was there. Our own Warren County Schools Transportation Department with a school bus and our heavy-duty tow truck maintenance vehicle. And Ray Harris, who was the owner of Smooth Logistics. Students were able to get in, get in the vehicles, touch them, talk with people in the professions, and explore possible career options that they may have never before considered at this point. So thank you to all of our community partners and our staff for making this possible, making this event possible. This week and next week, we're going into our science and engineering fairs. As our schools will be holding these events, they will allow students to ask questions, develop and conduct experiments, and design solutions to engineering challenges. I'm constantly amazed at what our students can do, and I look forward to seeing the inventive, creative, and even complex projects students will present this year. The top runners from each school will compete in the district-wide science and engineering fair next Friday, December 8th. As a result, that day is an early release day to allow students to participate and attend. Also, multicultural night. After the district science, district-wide science and engineering fair, everyone is invited to attend our first multicultural night, featuring some of our international teachers that work here in Warren County Schools. There will be food, music, and presentations about their home culture. Our theme this year continues on the relationships matter theme, and this is one way that we can strengthen our relationships with our international community by learning more about their home culture, showing our support, and celebrating them. Again, the multicultural night is Friday, December 8th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the cafeteria at Warren County High School. And as always, our radio show is coming up next week, Learn More with Warren County Schools. It'll be live on WARR 1520 AM and 105.3 FM, next Thursday from noon until 12:30. So we hope that you can listen on the radio, stream it online, or catch us live on the Warren County Schools Facebook page. And that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Where does the awards fall?
Sorry.
The teacher awards. Where do the teacher awards fall?
Some information.
It's 6.2.
Am I missing it?
Right at the bottom. Your finger's cut.
Oh, that's why I can't see it. Thank you. All right. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add information item 6.4, an update on the Parents' Bill of Rights.
A second. I have a motion made by Vice Chair Sims and a second by board member Tally Brain that we amend the agenda to include 6.4 Parents' Bill of Rights. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? No? That motion carries. I'd like to entertain a motion now to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for November 28th, 2023 work session slash business meeting.
Second? Okay, I have a motion from board member Ms. Tally Brain with a second by Ms. Byrd that we approve the November 28th, 2023 work session business meeting agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote? As well as with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
That, no opposed? That motion carries. Okay, so now we have public comment. And our first one is Sharonda Douglas Riddick.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, I'm Sharonda Douglas Riddick. I'm a parent at Warren County Middle School. I'm a seventh grader. I'm also the parents leader for the Want to Establish PTA. I've written so many roadblocks with establishing this PTA, so I come before you asking you for guidance and how we can obtain the funds to reestablish the PTA. The last PTA that Warren County Middle School had was established, was disbanded in 2016, and we have not had one since that time. And speaking with the national, excuse me, with the National Board and with North Carolina PTA Association, there's a $455 fee that needs to be paid for us to be reestablished. So I continue asking you for avenues to obtain that. I went to the school. I've been diligent since August in asking for these funds. I've also went to the county, and so now I'm coming before the board. If there's any suggestions for us to be able to establish this, I think this will be helpful. I think that the parents need the involvement. There's an avenue through Title I funds to have these funds, through parent involvement and monies that are there. So I'm asking for just suggestions and avenues to secure the $455 to establish the PTA for Warren County Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay. And our next public comment is by Carolyn Ross Holmes.
Good evening.
Make sure I'm on schedule. Carolyn Ross Holmes, and tonight, you know, we wear a lot of hats in the community, but tonight I'm here on behalf of the John 316 Center. John 316 Center, for those of you who may not be familiar, we are a nonprofit serving families in Warren, Halifax, and North Hampton County with various programs to support families to reduce the risk of child abuse and neglect. That translates into programs such as wonderful programs, after-school programs, summer camp. We have a community resource center in Ronic Rapids. So for families who may have material needs for items, that's a location that we will see them by appointment, and they can get those things at no charge. But tonight, I'm here to speak to you because one of the things John 316 Center was successful in doing was getting a grant from Kate B. Reynolds to establish what's called an after-school collaborative. And the main focus of that collaborative is to bring together after-school, out-of-school leaders, or those who are planning to be to organize something for after-school, because we recognize the value of after-school programming as an extension of the educational experience for our students. And so I'm very proud of the after-school program that we have at the John 316 Center. And we have also been very fortunate to have resources that we have available that we want to be able to share with those leaders. And so the collaborative, just coming to give you a heads up about the collaborative, and if you are aware of any after-school or out-of-school programs, and that includes summer camp as well as after-school during the school year. For those leaders, a letter of invitation will go out to them, and we will meet monthly in the three counties, and so that we can have that exchange for the need of resources and professional development for those organizations. We were fortunate enough that just earlier this month in Raleigh, there is the North Carolina for After-School Programs, the Synergy Conference. Out of the collaborative funding that we have, we were able to sponsor four individuals to attend that conference. So that's an example of the type of resources that are available, as well as STEM projects and consumables that can either be made available to those organizations to supplement. So at the bottom line, whether you have a child in Warren, Halifax, or North Hampton County that's in an after-school program, we know that it's going to be good stuff.
Absolutely.
That's the mission. All right. Thank you so much. And we use data. I got brand-new data that I'm going to send you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our public comments. So now we'll start with our information items, presentation on construction delivery methods. And that would be...
And my colleague Sharon Lynn is here from Barrington Smith. She was going to be joined by Rod Malone, who at the moment is MIA. But Sharon has assured me that she's comfortable proceeding, or the board could proceed with its other information items and conclude with this item once hopefully Mr. Malone is here. It's at the pleasure of the board. Just wait for him.
Yeah, thank you. Let's switch. Switch and we go raw. Yeah. Let's switch and we go raw.
Who, who will? To wait for, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Are we good flipping? Okay. All right, so we're going to flip and start with the information item 6.2.
Give us some time. We'll give Rod a few more minutes. Thank you, Sharon.
Okay, so Dr. Riddick. There we go. Would you like a drum roll?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to recognize on tonight our Beginning Teacher of the Year, Teacher of the Year, and Principal of the Year candidates. Presenting Warren County Schools 2023 Beginning Teacher of the Year, school level winners, we have Ms. Shalanda Henderson, English teacher of the former Warren New Tech and current of Warren County High, come up at this time. Thank you. Ms. Shalane Sitvari, teacher of Law &amp; Broad Elementary. Ms. Victor Hunt, junior PE teacher and an athletic director at Warren County High School. And Mrs. Julie Eaton, science teacher, Warren Early College High School. We want to congratulate each of you on the wonderful work that you do with our students and just the inspiration you all are to be a beginning teachers. Got the shot? Okay. And our Warren County Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year is Nonna Van, Ms. Shalanda Henderson, former assistant chief of, former assistant high school at Warren County High School. And while we are handing out the awards, we're going to ask Superintendent Sutton to join the group so that Ms. Mallon can get a shot along with our board chair. And we will also take some additional shots in the lobby in front of the backdrop once we conclude. Congratulations, everyone. And please read the special. We're going to go ahead and transition. Thank you, congratulations again, you all. We're proud of you. At this time, we're going to pay a recognition to the 2023 Teacher of the Year, school level winners. We have Mrs. Notoria Henry, fourth fifth grade, young woman, social studies teacher at Vaughn Elementary School. We have Mrs. Shannon Bowe, first grade teacher, young woman, elementary. We have Mrs. Sophia Cranston, English teacher of the former Warren New Tech High School and current Warren County High School. We have Mrs. Shalona Austin, kindergarten slash first grade, teaching, high school, she's a primary lesson teacher. Ms. Bridget Perry, family consumer sciences teacher, Warren County High School. We have Mr. Clinton Eaton, math and science teacher at Warren Elementary High School. And we have Ms. Shanae Perry, special education teacher at Warren County Middle School. And we congratulate you all on being school level winners, and we truly appreciate all that you do for our children. And our 2023-24 Teacher of the Year for Warren County Schools is Nonna Van, Mrs. Sophia Cranston, former Warren New Tech, current Warren County, sorry, Warren County High School. And also, I can't remember which special or elementary gift.
Congratulations. And if y'all will please stick around, once we dismiss, we'll do some pictures too in front of the sign outside or out in the lobby right here.
And I'd say I want to recognize our Principal of the Year for Warren County Schools. Again, we appreciate all the work that our elders and our school administrators come up for Warren County Schools. And our Principal of the Year for the 2023-24 school year is Nonna Van, Ms. Shalona Jankis, Principal, Warren County. Thank you, Principal Matthews. And again, we welcome taking our photos outside so that everyone has a chance to get a photo out. And thank you all again.
Congratulations, everybody.
So, get 6.3. Look at the agenda.
We added, it's already there. Oh, okay. Okay, so it's not 6.4, it's 6.3. Okay. I thought I asked you that, was it on there? And you said, no, we have to amend it so that it had already been put on here. It was not on the one we saw today. That I looked at today.
Right.
Thank you for staying.
All right. Again, congratulations to all our winners. Now, we will go back to six point one and have our presentation on construction delivery methods with Barrington Smith, Rod Malone, and partner. Maybe not his partner.
So, we are with Sharon Lynn.
Briefly.
So Sharon is one of the lawyers at Barrington.
Well, I think you use the mic so people can hear you.
Sorry.
For the audience.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Sharon Lynn's one of the lawyers at Barrington Smith. She is doing a lot of the work that I do. This is the first time we really had somebody at Barrington that's doing a lot of the work that I do. So she's doing a lot of the construction work and contracting work. And actually, she's also doing some real estate work for us. So she is kind of taking over my practice, so to speak. I am happy to hand it off to her. She's excited to do it. Ha, ha, ha. But anyway, she's been a joy to work with. She's going to take the lead on the presentation that we put together. And then I'll be available to fill in if necessary to answer questions about the process if there are any that she doesn't cover. But the short version of this is that Superintendent is making a recommendation to the Board of Education that for the New Tech school project, that you employ a construction manager at risk instead of bidding this in the more traditional method. And what the statute requires you to do is to consider all of the methods that are out there as part of making a decision to do that. So Sharon's going to lead you through all of the options that are available to you and also discuss construction management at risk. And then we'll answer any questions you've got about any of the processes. And then I don't think we're asking Mr. Sutton for the board to make a decision tonight. We're just giving them the information so you can think about it.
I would just back up and say we're not prepared to make a recommendation just yet at this time, be it construct C Mar or else, but just give an overview of those methods and then allowing the board to have some time to consider each, each method. And as you hear about those, some things may appear apparent after, after we're done. But in our fairness, we want to give you information on all methods before we start to get to a point where recommending one over another.
So with that said, the presentation is slanted in the construction management at risk direction because it really is the preferred method in the stand time. It's how most school systems are building schools now. Wake has pretty much exclusively used construction management at risk for, since the day the statute was enacted. Charlotte Mac pretty much exclusively does it. Your neighbor, North Hampton, their board just reviewed a similar presentation and voted to use construction management at risk for their new high school. And the Weldon City Schools and other neighbor viewers also recently did. It is really the method that more and more public owners are using. The university system pretty much exclusively uses construction management at risk. State construction does. It's really what's taken over now in North Carolina primarily because of the ability for you as an owner to select the construction manager based on qualifications and not be subject to just the low bid method. So that's the way the presentation is laid out and put together. But with that said, you are free to use any of the methods that are out there after you hear from Sharon.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. You'll have to hear from me after all. All right. So I've kind of prepared this presentation as more of kind of how we get to the construction manager at risk. So in order to make a determination that the CM at risk is the best way to proceed, we have to go through a few of the previous iterations of historical, traditional construction delivery methods. So what I'm going to talk about, the overarching design bid build method, basically for decades, the traditional way for public institutions to build new construction was the design bid build method. So basically, projects are developed by a school district. They are designed by an architect with engineers. Then they are publicly bid. So and then they are awarded to the low bid contractor, therefore the design bid and then build. So the key components of this method is that the owner controls design and the construction. Design changes are pretty easily accommodated during the design phase. And the design is completed prior to the construction award. And this results in a low bid cost and maximum competition. It's fairly easy to implement, and the owner basically controls the design and the construction quality. Now, there are pros and cons to this. As you know, this more control also equals more work in a lot of instances. So one of the reasons why school districts have kind of shifted towards the CM at risk is because they need kind of a separate pair of eyes to, to help them and throughout the entire process. One of the first ways that the design bid build method was implemented was through separate prime bidding. Now, this is not really used anymore. It's, I don't think any school district has used this in the past 15 years. But basically, historically, the owner would award a separate contract for each of the four, so that the four being a general contractor, HVAC, plumbing, and electrical. And even though the general contractor would be responsible for coordinating all this work, because all of these contractors are what's called prime contractors and not subs, the owner then has to be burdened with policing the relationships and managing four separate contracts. And this is what, this is a chart that I found on the UNC School of Government website, but you can kind of see. I think there is a pointer here, but maybe not. But basically, you can see that the owner contracts separately with the designer architect, and then it also directly contracts with each of the four contractors. Okay, so the second type of design bid build that I wanted to go over is the single prime contracting. Now, this is still used. A lot of school districts are still using this kind of delivery method. But basically, the single prime requires that a single general construction bidder to identify on their proposal the subcontractors selected for HVAC, plumbing, and electrical. So the single prime kind of relieves the owner of the responsibility to coordinate multiple contractors, and it gives the owner a single point of contact for the construction project. And this is a chart for single prime bidding. You can see that public owner contracts directly with general and then the general contracts with the subs. Okay. And dual bidding is a combination of separate prime and single prime bidding. So in dual bidding, the owner solicits bids under both separate and single prime systems and then awards the contract to the lowest responsible responsive bidder under either system. But since separate prime bidding is so rarely used now, dual bidding is also not used very much anymore. So now we're moving on to construction manager at risk. So construction manager at risk can be used when the public entity determines that it is in the best interest of the project and the public entity has compared the advantages and disadvantages of using this particular method for a given project rather than the three traditional methods that I, I just went over. It's selected based on a qualification-based solicitation, typically at the beginning of the design process. And this construction manager at risk works with both the owner and the designer architect. They provide input on constructability and cost estimates during the design phase. And they also have to provide a performance and payment bond to the public entity. So this is a chart that kind of shows what the construction manager at risk model looks like. Okay. So some of the advantages of the CM at risk, it transfers some of the responsibility for construction and some of the risk from the owner to the construction manager. You have a better idea of the construction cost during the, the design phase. And the construction manager has control of the construction. They manage the construction and all of the subcontractors. And in some cases, construction might start before the design is completed, which could reduce the project time. And the design is selected prior to the construction manager. So we have the design first, although the construction manager is usually involved during the design process. But there's also the potential to have better qualified subs because the construction manager at risk is putting together all of the bid packages and hiring the subs themselves. So there's better increased or increased cost control earlier on in the project. And they also establish what's called a guaranteed maximum price with the owner during the design phase in order and which can result in a positive change order to the owner. So the owner could potentially reduce a lot of costs in, in the, throughout the project. Okay. And the statute that governs the CM at risk is 143 dash 128.1. I won't go through all of this. It's a lot of writing. But basically, the CM at risk publicly advertises and pre-qualifies all of their subcontractors. They have to comply with the state minority business enterprise program requirements. All, they open bids in public, all bids become public records. They own, they owe the owner a fiduciary obligation during the entire bid process, and they can only self-perform work under very limited circumstances. They prepare all the bid forms and bid packages, and the designer interprets the documents of approved products and change orders, et cetera. And this is just the list of the additional materials that I think were part of the agenda, but a comparison of public construction delivery methods, advantages and disadvantages of construction management at risk, and a sample resolution approving the CM at risk construction delivery method.
What I would add is that one of the reasons that CM at risk has become the preferred method in many places, again, is the ability for the owner to select the CM based on qualifications. So like you did with the architect, if you were to go in this direction, you would issue an RFQ. We would work with Mr. Sutton and staff to make sure that that RFQ got in the hands of numerous construction managers that do this work. You then, they would then submit their proposals to the school system, and you could decide how you wanted to, you know, narrow it down and who you might want to interview. But you get to choose someone based on who you believe to be the most qualified person to do your project. And, and that's a big benefit. The other huge benefit that you heard Sharon mention is that during the design phase, the construction manager, it would be working hand in hand with the architect during, doing all kinds of budget analysis and cost estimates to make sure that the project stays within budget. And when you've got a project like yours and the one in North Hampton and one in Weldon, where you have a cap more than likely in the amount of cash that's available, having the CM work with the architect during the design phase to make sure that when you ultimately have a complete set of design drawings, that it can be as close as possible to the amount of money that you've got available is, is important. In some places, Charlotte Mac or Wake, if it comes in a little over, they might have reserves that they can reach into, while they may not want to, to fund the difference. But for many of our clients, there is no extra money. You know, you get your grant money or the commissioners tell you, you get blank amount of money, and you must make it fit within that budget. So having a CM on the project during the design phase helps with that. It doesn't guarantee it. They can still come in over budget, but it certainly helps with that. The other thing we found in this crazy inflationary period that we've been in is that the CMs are able to issue bid packages for some of the long lead time items with the COVID era that we're still dealing with. Certainly on the construction side, there are many items that have very long lead times that did not exist pre-COVID. And one of the problems that owners have run into on some projects is not being able to get equipment or materials and not being able to hold those prices. So some of those items, the, the architect and the CM, once they know, let's say, what kind of HVAC equipment they're going to use in the building or what kind of acts they're going to use, they can order some of those items early and get some cost savings and ensure that they are available for you when you need them. Now, the downside to that, there is a little bit of a risk if you were to do that in that you are somewhat committing yourself to the project, and you have to hope that your budgeting is correct or that the CM's budgeting and estimating is correct. Because once you start spending a couple million dollars here and there, you can't really afford to have the project bid over later. But you would only make those decisions after careful discussion with the CM. You've got NEMA working with you, you've got the architect, you've got Mr. Sutton, who would all be looking at this and will feel pretty certain or comfortable if they were to bring you those recommendations. But those are the kinds of things that people are finding that CM at risk has proven to be a better tool during this COVID and post-COVID world that we're in, especially on the construction side. I'm happy to answer questions about anything that Sharon said or that I said or anything that we didn't say.
I think I have two. My first one is, so with the CMA, CMA, CMA risk, at risk, so is that person or company actually the, the company that will hire you, the subcontractors?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question, yes. So the way that the stat, yes, so that you would hire the CM, and when you hire the CM, we would, working with Mr. Sutton and NEMA, we would help negotiate a fee. So they get a, a, a known fee, you know exactly what their fee is going to be. You then also would negotiate what they call general conditions, and that's the cost for the CM to be on the site for, in this case, let's say, 18 moms during construction. The cost of their superintendent, the cost of power, the cost of all this stuff gets negotiated into one lump sum number. So you've got a, a line item for that and a line item for their fee. And then the rest of it is bid. So the CM then has to bid all of the trade packages. And it's more than just the three that you kind of see on the chart because it's, it's they, you know, you get the sheet rock person, you get the concrete person, you get the tile person, you get the lighting person. You know, so there's probably typically 35 to 40 trade packages that the CM will bid. All of this is bid openly. You get every, Mr. Sutton will see every single quote, and the, when it comes to you, if you were to go in this direction, you would see each of those line items on a piece of paper, a line, and it totals up to a number, and then you add in the CM's fee, and then you add in the general conditions, and you get a total contract price, which hopefully would be. would be inside of the total amount of money that you're going to get from the grant and or other sources. But then all of that is under the CM, so you only deal with the CM. And the CM is responsible for all of those trade subs.
And did you say that we do put out a RFQ?
Yes.
For that, for the CM?
For the CM. You put out an RFQ for the CM, and and this statute, so basically, as they started building these statutes on top of each other, the first statute was for the selection of architects, and then they added surveyors, and then they added engineer, I mean, and then they added construction managers to that same statute. So you use the exact same process, you provide notice, and then you select based upon qualifications. And and again, I would think that where you're located, we ought to be able to get you several really good qualified construction managers who would definitely be interested in this project.
Okay.
Rod?
Two questions. One, does the CM at risk method help or hurt our ability to work with minority contractors?
So what most people would say, Mr. Sutton, is that it it significantly increases your use of local contractors and minority contractors. Because on a regular project, think about it this way, so what would happen in a regular project is the architect designs it, and the owner puts it on what they call on the street or out for bid. And typically, it's a one-month window of time for the contractors to find out about your project, start looking for subcontractors, and to get a bid back into you in about a month's period of time typically. On a CM at risk project, what happens is they're required to pre-qualify their subs by statute, but that also means that they start looking for subs from about day one. So during that whole year of design, they are looking for subs, they are trying to find people who are interested. And if you tell them that you really want your local people to be involved, they will go out and try to find and scour for those people. Most of our owners really encourage them to to get high minority participation, so that's something that they already are looking for. So what you find on most CM projects is that you have a higher MBE, minority business participation rate than on a regularly bid job, and also better local participation.
Second question, I think in the presentation, you mentioned, always mentioned that this tends to favor public owners such as school systems. What is typically the preferred method of both engineers and contractors? Do they typically prefer CM at risk? I'm, I asked that question because oftentimes, if the owner is the preferred or favors us, then there's something different that architects and construction.
So that's a great question. So I would say this, in various parts of the state, single-prime bidding is probably still used more than CM at risk. So so some of the larger contractors in this area that might would otherwise bid this project might not be qualified or the best qualified construction managers at risk. So it may be, and I don't know who the players are in your area, but it may be that some of the players in your area that might otherwise submit a quote for this project if you were to bid it traditionally may not be the best construction managers at risk. Because while while most of the people are starting out as general contractors, for the most part, over the last several years, people have kind of picked a camp, right? So you have your traditional single-prime, regular general contractors, and then you've got people who have kind of converted themselves into construction managers. And a lot of the construction managers don't now bid single-prime work for various reasons. So one of the things that we found is that the quality of the general contracting community is less now because most of the good contractors have converted to construction management at risk. So architects are smart, engineers are smart, they will do whatever you choose, right? If you tell them you like CM at risk, they're going to tell you, that's great. If you tell them you want to go single-prime, they'll take it, that's great. But but I do think that what you've, what you would find is that, is that if you get a good CM and a good architect and evoke, if you evoke is such a good architect, I mean, that they ought to be able to work well together with the CM to create the best project for you as an owner. But yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll do whatever. They don't, you know, the the people who will be upset will be the the general contractors who are not, who are not some of the better CMs, because they, their resumes won't stack up against the people who do a lot of CM at risk historically. But while getting you a large number of CMs, just to make sure that they get your RFQ, and again, given where you're located, I don't think you're going to have any trouble getting a good number of good CMs to submit.
And what's the timeframe for this, Ms. Mallon?
I would say that typically, if you do an RFQ, I would want to give at least three weeks for the CMs to respond. And then normally, I would say that staff would probably need two weeks to kind of come up with the people that they may want to interview or have the board interview. And then, you know, you'd have a day of interviews, and then then you can make a selection. So I I'd say typically, you know, maybe five weeks from the time that you, if you went in this direction, that you told Mr. Sutton that this is what you wanted to do. Sharon's already prepared RFQs in Northampton and Weldon that we could easily convert to to use here, if that's your preference.
So Rod, one question. Did I understand you saying that we, as a board, could interview the people who were out for bid, or did I misinterpret?
No, you didn't misinterpret. So here's what I would say. In some places where they build schools a lot, staff more than likely handles the interviewing of the CMs, Charlotte Mack, Guilford, Durham, you know, they build a lot of schools. And but, you know, like I told the Weldon Board, and like I told the Northampton Board, I mean, this is your school. This is a big deal in this community, and you, I am sure, are going to want to be part of it at every level. And it would be my expectation that you would expect to be part of the interview process. And it may very well be that, depending on how many people respond, that you would allow staff to narrow it down to three or four people to recommend to you to interview. But my guess would be that you would want to do that interview. And you can punt it to staff, and again, in several places, the board does not interview. But what I know about, you know, Warren and Northampton and Weldon and, you know, you, I'm sure you're going to want to do that interviewing yourself. So that's, that's kind of what I would have, would recommend to Mr. Sutton.
Thank you for that.
Rod, being that we, that there are projects going on in Northampton and Warren, even in Halifax, all these neighboring areas, do CM at risk firms normally take on multiple projects? Since there are projects already going on in in the area, would we have trouble competing against those counties to get the best CM at risk firms if their projects are already going on in neighboring counties? Is that?
That's a great question. So the way I would analyze that is, I would say that in general, you know, CM at risk firms, like anybody, and that the closer you are to their office, the more likely they are to try to pursue your work. I think that what you're going to see, though, is that when, when Northampton and Weldon have their, their, because they're several months ahead of you, right? So when they select their firms, those firms will then already be in the area, and they will already be interviewing and talking to the same subcontractors that will be working on those projects. So I think you're going to find more interest in your project because there are going to be firms already in the area. The Halifax County Board of Education, they're using a method that we didn't cover here, because the statute doesn't require us to cover for this, but they're using design-build, not design-bid-build, that's a kind of construction, but they're using the design-build method, build method. They've hired an architect and a, and a contractor as a unit, and that's how they're building their new, whatever they are building, I forget what they're, they're trying to build. But but that's a, and that's a good general contractor, too, I can't think of the name of them, Mosely's the architect. But that's a good, that's another contractor who will be in this region, and I know they do CM work, and I'm sure that when this comes up, because they're going to already be in this region, that that'll help you. So I think, you know, Mr. Sutton, it's long, I answered your question, I think that it'll actually, you'll be in a better position because there are people who will already now be starting to put their stake in the ground and doing work in this area, and I think that'll help you. I know A.R. Chesson is very interested in the Northampton project, I heard that from somebody, so I think that there, there's some good contractors out there who will be interested.
Any further questions? Ms. Mallon?
No.
Okay. Here are none. You have any further thing you'd like to share with us?
No, not at all. So, Mr. Sutton, I'm, I don't think that the board will need to have another presentation like this, but whenever you decide, we included in the materials a draft of a resolution that we've used in some other places. We recommend that you do it by resolution, just to show compliance with the statute. I then, once you decide that you want to go in this direction, if that's what you decide, then we'll work on an RFQ and and help move all that along.
Can I check operations over there? Any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Sorry I was late.
That's all right. We know the traffic is terrible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice meeting you, Sharon.
Nice meeting you.
Okay. We'll sit then. To our update on policy changes regarding the Parents' Bill of Rights, Dr. Kedra Whitaker.
Good evening.
To comply with the requirements of the NC Session Law 2023-106, Senate Bill 49, which creates a new chapter 114A of the general statutes titled Parents' Bill of Rights, and also amends Chapter 115C of the general statutes to add new requirements for schools regarding parental guides and notifications, staff is presenting several policy changes for the board's consideration. These policy considerations will also require, will also require review and input from, by the public. Through consultation with the North Carolina School Boards Association, seven policies have been identified that require updates based on the NC Session Law 2023 dash 106. These policies and recommended changes are being shared for review by both the board and public. Further opportunity for reviewing questions will be provided on this Thursday, November 30th, at 4:30 PM, in a meeting of the board and a policy committee. Further input by the public may be provided through a board member or electronically via the district's website, no later than 12:00 PM on Monday, December 11th. The board will be asked to provide final approval of these statutory mandated policy changes and in its regular board meeting of the year on Tuesday, December 12th. And so listed, you all will see that there are seven policies, but again, as we shared in the summary, we will go through those in depth at a policy committee meeting and also provide an opportunity for the public to give input as well. Are there any questions?
So the public input is after we meet on Thursday, or before? You present this now?
That can be done at any time.
Okay.
Between now and then?
From now until noon on Monday, uh, December 11th.
And the statute is somewhat vague in terms of what constitutes that, a kind of community engagement. So I think what Mr. Sutton and Dr. Whitaker had planned to do was post some of the policies online and provide a central email address where feedback from the community could be solicited and provided, in addition to, of course, there'd be a public comment at your next board meeting before the board takes action.
Definitely post it online, I'm sure.
Been in consultation with Ms. Mallon, Chief Communications of Engagement, so this may.
Do we know where it is online? What's the easiest way to direct someone there? Thank you, Ms. Mallon. That'll alleviate a call.
So Mr. Pyleen is pulling up our website, our main page, and if you go to the menu section, I think it is under Parents, perhaps? Their Parents' Bill of Rights midway down?
Okay.
And there's what, in the guidance that we got from Tharrington Smith, we essentially copied and pasted all of that. We will add the feedback portion, we've been talking about that tonight, so we can get that up tomorrow, no later than Thursday. It may end up being a Google form that may be easier for us to monitor than a separate email address, but we will have a way for people to provide feedback. In talking with Maura, there are also a couple other policies that we probably need to post, and so I'm getting a list of all those and can get those added.
Thank you.
But it's from the menu section under Parents, and there's currently a Parents' Bill of Rights. If it's something that doesn't deal with the Parents' Bill of Rights but deals with something else, then we would create another tab for that.
Great, thank you.
And I'll, so Parents?
Also on each school's website as well, I believe, if they have a Parents' section, it's under Parents, and if not, then I think there was one school that didn't have a Parents' section or something equivalent, and I think in that school, we may have put it under About Us or something.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I know, as you said, we're going to have it on the website, is it possible to also maybe do a local call, just for for those, to to make parents aware that it is out there that we need their feedback?
Feedback.
Yeah.
If you would like me to, I certainly can.
Yeah. What do y'all think?
Yeah, yeah, that was sort of where I was going, you know, to inform parents that that's available, and we would like to have some feedback.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Apparently not. Okay. We have one action item, Warren County Schools District Improvement Plan, presented by Dr. Keisha Clemmons.
Good evening, everyone. Well, I stand before you today to present our revised district improvement plan. And so what I'm going to share, just kind of remind you of a couple things that we have done, and then go through this comprehensive report. So just as a reminder, based on general statute, we were identified, our school district was identified as a low-performing school, because more than 50% of our schools were also designated as low-performing schools. With that, we have undergone a process of developing a preliminary plan, which we presented to you in October. We also made that preliminary plan accessible on our website for feedback for 30 days, as well as internal feedback to modify and adapt our plan based on the needs of our schools, our students, and our school district as a whole. And so today, I stand before you to ask for approval of our district improvement plan. One thing to remember about our plan is, when we presented our preliminary plan, we gave an overview of key strategies that gave an overview of key strategies that we were gonna use to move our district forward. As a part of being a low-performing district, we are required to use a platform called NCSTAR. And NCSTAR has specific, it's actually 37 effective practices that we call indicators that we choose to focus in on. So, as we talked, and I know it may be hard to see from here, as we talked in our last meeting, when we presented the preliminary plan, we presented several priorities. One, around high-quality instruction, around strengthening our school and district improvement practices, recruiting, supporting, and retaining high-quality educators, ensuring that our students have access to multiple pathways, utilizing a variety of services and supports to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of our students and families, as well as we added, in addition to engagement with our families and communities. So, those seven priorities still stand. When you look at the comprehensive report, what you will see on its first page is our overall mission, our district priorities that I just shared with you, as well as our vision and our goals, which we have reviewed. As we move into the rest of the plan, I wanted to share with you how the, the comprehensive report is laid out. So, for each section, you will see the overall dimension that we chose. So, Dimension A is Instructional Excellence and Alignment. You will also, the letters and numbers, the AO1 is the actual indicator that we chose to focus in on, and it also explains what that indicator is. So, as you can see in this example, AO1 is the superintendent and central office staff are accountable for district and school improvement and student learning outcomes. You will see in this comprehensive plan, then, an initial assessment. I am very thankful for our district improvement team for the many hours that they've invested in looking at each one of these effective practices, understanding what they mean, evaluating where we are currently, and then, what does this look like when it's fully implemented? When we have an understanding of these practices and it is implemented in our schools and across our district, what does that look like? And from there, that, the team developed key action steps. Those key action steps are, are the same action steps that we identified initially, as well as some additional action steps, once we looked at data and looking at these effective practices. So, you will see the initial assessment, you will see what full implementation looks like, so we spent a great deal of time laying out each one of those bullets. And then, after the, the full, fully implemented big picture, then we laid out those action steps. And you can see, after the yellow area, you will see each of the key action steps. You will also see who is the primary person who is assigned to that action step, as well as a timeline. So, when you read this report, it's organized by the indicators that we chose. We chose five indicators, all from instructional excellence and alignment, from leadership capacity, from professional development, and from families and community. So, from those areas, we chose five indicators that we were currently working on. Those indicators is AO1, which is around being accountable for student learning outcomes, AO2, which is the superintendent modeling and communicating expectations for student learning, CO4 and C10 is around professional, professional capacity, so recruiting and retaining high-quality educators, as well as developing a comprehensive professional development plan. And then, EO3, which is establishing two-way communications for transparency, feedback loops to engage our families and communities. So, those are the five areas that we've chosen. You have, you have access to the report to see each of those key action steps, and at this time, I will open up for any questions that you have about any of the action steps or the indicators that were selected.
Help me with the date. The dates, when it will be completed, or help?
Yes, those are the dates when it's gonna be completed. And so, you will see them by indicator, not necessarily all chronological, it's chronological by indicator.
Okay.
One of the, one of the things that our team has talked about and discussed and shared in our last meeting was around creating a timeline to make this report look a little bit easier to read. It's a comprehensive report, and it's important for all of our internal and external stakeholders to understand what this looks like, because this is what is submitted to the state, and we provide, we are provided feedback based on this comprehensive plan. But we know the, the layout and the format is not always as easy to read, so looking at ways that we can simplify this, making sure that anyone that goes to our website or our school websites can understand exactly the key areas that we are looking at and the key action steps, and how we're progressing towards each of those action steps.
So, out of the 37, I think you said, key indicators, you chose how many?
Five.
And is there a reason why we only have one layer of a person that's responsible for the task versus team effort, I guess I could say?
It is a team effort. So, we, the, the one person is assigned to each as an overseer, to making sure that we are on track to meeting that key action step. But when we developed and analyzed this, we did use a team approach. So, we all came together in smaller groups, and then we shared out in a larger group, so...
For an example, when we do, let's, let me go there real quick. If I'm looking at it correctly, like, for the walkthrough that's done by Latonya McNeil?
Yes.
Why would she be the only per, so, other people are gonna do the walkthrough, but she's just responsible for the task? I'm not clear.
So, so, the members that are listed there are members of our district improvement team, and so, the goal is to make sure that we spread out all of the workloads, that makes it a little bit easier. So, Ms. McNeil, for example, for that one, is a part of our academic service team, and so she is just a person who is going to make sure that we are doing all those pieces. She's not doing it alone. It's a, it's a full team of the academic service team that's helping to develop that walkthrough tool, principals are helping to develop that, use it, but there's one person that is like, that's my thing, I'm making sure that we don't miss any deadlines with this, that we're moving and progressing. So, it's just a person that's overseeing it.
And I guess my thought, my thought process would be, I, you know, I'm here to ask the question, so now I got the response, and I understand it that way, but just by reading this document, how would I know that she's the only, you know, I would assume that she's the only person? Now that I asked the question, you've explained it, so there's a team effort, but when you send this to the Department of DOL, you send it, I'm saying DOL, but Department of Public Instruction, DOL is my, my work, but when you send it to the Department of Public Instruction, how, how would they know?
Well, they know, well, they know the process of how this works, and they, the platform they set up and they give to us, so they know how it works. I think that you bring up a great question around how does everyone else know, and we're definitely open for suggestions of how we can better help communicate that, if it's misleading that one person is doing all that work.
It may not be, because if I know the process, I don't know the process, you know? So, if everybody else does, then it probably is just me, assuming.
Well, I'm sure it's not just you, so, it is, you know, because it's easy to see a one person might be responsible for all of that, but I think that that can take some talk and discussion around how do we make this more transparent? What are the questions that others may have when they read this? And, and maybe being proactive with that, just as some of the other suggestions that have been made.
Sounds good.
So, that, that person will also assess those, from the implementation status to the target date, is, is something going on, is, are those...
How do you track the measurement of doing it?
Yeah, other than assess, as to where we, how far are we from our target, or, you know, that kind of thing, you know?
I think I understand your questions, I'm gonna respond, but if I, if I don't, just re-reas it to me. So, when you look at each of those key action steps, for, for the most part, it's the metrics of how it's gonna be assessed is either embedded in there, or we tried to add in notes, if you would, if you can see some of the notes underneath the key action steps may help clarify how we will measure it. Now, as, as a person who facilitates the district improvement team, we take all of these indicators that we might have over the next three years, and we have to look at what is happening, what, what are we each focused on for the next 30 days, the next 60 days, the next 90 days? And we map out a plan so that we don't get to the next meeting and we're like, oh, we forgot about X, Y, and Z, you know, one of the, one of the key action steps. So, from this, we lay out a timeline of when certain things need to happen, who needs to be a part of those individual key action steps, because it doesn't solely fall on the one person that's names listed there.
Is there a possibility of putting under the person's name what their title is or what their, because you said stakeholders also would probably have this information as well?
The, the platform does not allow for you to put the person's role in, it is a dropdown menu, and you just select the person's name. However, what we can do is, at the, in the platform, NCSTAR, there's a list of all of our team members and their roles, so we could have a slide or a page with all the team members and their roles, so that you can refer back to it if you don't know who each of the, the members are.
I think that would be most helpful.
Okay. I'm trying to ask, think, my, think of my question, I'm not exactly sure, so if you, you have a roadmap, you have mapped out each one of these action steps, which I'm thinking is, in essence, a pacing guide of sorts as teachers, so then, how do we, as, how, how do we know if you're meeting that goal? How do, how do you, so we don't end up at the end of the year, and it's like, wow, there was a gap, and we never saw it, because we didn't see it coming, because we weren't apprised? So, how will the board be kind of apprised of, of your pacing, of getting this done? So, because it's a, we know it's a big job.
Yeah, that's a great question, Ms. Layman, and Ms. Long and I had talked about in our committee meetings to have some regular updates of data and where we are along this path. So, I think that that's a great, great start, but if there are other suggestions, you know, we're open to hearing those and, and making adjustments.
Thank you.
Looks great to me, I'm impressed with it. I really am.
Well, I'm very thankful for our whole team, you know, gathering a lot of people together in one room and doing this work, and, and they spent many hours, and so, the beauty of this platform and this work, it's, it's never-ending. So, as we, you know, assess where we are, we have to make changes, we may have to add additional key action steps. We may have thought something could have worked, and we might have to take it out. So, the beauty is that it continues to evolve, until we meet all of these indicators, and we had to focus in on only a few, so that we can do it well, and then keep moving forward. Oftentimes, we try to take on more than what we can handle, and so, we were really thoughtful and intentional.
And that's the reason why I asked a question about 37, that you indicators versus the five we're doing, because specifically for the public to know, that I think we're doing a better job now of singling it down to what we can work with and do really well at it, versus having a long list of stuff, and we don't master anything. So, that's the reason why I asked the question.
Yes, ma'am. And could you repeat those five indicators again?
Would you like the, like, the numbers of them? AO1 and AO2 is under instructional excellence and alignment, and there's CO4 and C10, which is under professional capacity, and then EO3, which is family and community.
So, EO3 here?
Yes, it's at the end, so if you probably have to, if you have a digital...
So, I don't see it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, does the state, once you submit this, does the state give you, how does the state give you feedback?
They, they do, they, so we submit it in the platform, and then usually, end of January, beginning of February, they put in coaching comments into the platform. So, they go through every piece of it, and then they give feedback, bring that to your team, and then revise. And then, we'll submit again in the spring.
Okay.
And the same process happens for every school's improvement plan as well.
I like this report. It's very thorough.
Do we know how many districts are low-performing?
I think it was, oh, somebody just gave us, no, actually, that was CSI schools. I don't know, but I can find out.
I would like that number, because I don't think we're alone in this process, and I wanna make sure that our stakeholders understand we are not alone in this process, there are many districts.
Well, I can tell you that I, because I just had a meeting with James Pop around CSI, which is a federal designation, so all schools that are federally designated are also either low-performing schools or districts as well, and he said he has 105 schools. So, there's more than 105 schools, for sure, but I can find that number for you, I just don't know how many across the state.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve the Warren County Schools District Improvement Plan as presented by Dr. Keisha Clemmons.
Second.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the Warren County Schools District Improvement Plan. Second.
Okay, I have a motion from co-chair, I mean, Vice Chair Sims, and a second by Board Member Long, that we approve the Warren County Schools District Improvement Plan as presented. All those in favors, may we vote, and, as well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? That motion carries. And at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Did you vote yet? Did you vote yet? I thought I did. Okay. Sorry.
And, and just for good measure, Madam Chair, you might first entertain a motion to amend the agenda, to remove the closed session item, which was included, just in error.
Okay. All right. Per counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda and remove the closed session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to remove the 8.0 convening the closed session item. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion from Vice Chair Sims, and a second by Board Member Long, that we amend the agenda to remove our closed session. All those in favor, may we say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? That motion carries. Okay, now I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that will adjourn this meeting.
Second. I have a motion from Board Member Brame, and a second by Board Member Bird, that we adjourn this meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? That motion carries. Meeting adjourned.